Kerry, do you remember? It's a public hearing for each tribe.
Yes.
Okay, we'll open up with a public hearing first for the rezoning request. Just a second here. James won't be here. Cody, do you hear Peewee? Anything I had for the public hearing for the rezon-
No.
Public hearing for the rezon-
Nothing.
Anybody have any questions or- Alright, let's go there. Close out of that. And let's have a public hearing. The variance request on column lane. I believe-
That would be me.
Yes. This is a public hearing, you don't have to say anything, you're more than welcome to. Call it up easy.
I understood that I was only here to answer questions or to clarify.
Yes.
So I'm not really here to defend this in any way, just to clarify or... You know, not knowing any of you here, I always like a man to see my face, so you recognize who I am at a later date, so... But yes, that's the only reason I'm here. So if there's questions, if there's something that's not clear, and I can clarify it, at the end of the hearing I might have a question, so...
Anybody have any questions?
You're the owner of the home-
Yes, sir. At 921, column lane.
I'd just like to commend you. I drive by there quite often and there's a lot of improvements being done.
Thank you.
The only question I have is just more clarification. You're just wanting to build on the side setback closer to the property line for reasons being where the road is- The description you gave where the road is out of the right of way center anyway, so you're just trying to expand your place closer than the side setback? But you're not encroaching over it or anything like that? You're still all on your property?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
Okay.
It's a single car garage to go on the- On the west side of the house. It does not cross over the property line. And it is by my estimations three feet from my actual property line.
Correct.
I did have- I did submit photos and things.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that were very helpful. That was well documented. The letter was nice and the drawings and everything there. I appreciate all that.
Do you know how far it would be from the center line of the street? The proposed building?
To my property line, to the street ditch on the west side, there is by my estimation thirty, at least thirty feet. And then if my- If my structure is to be three feet back from the property line, it would be thirty-three feet to the ditch. Now, I've not been able to determine where the center line of the street is. There's though, because the street is offset to the west half of the lot that was designated for the street, it makes it hard for me to determine where the center line of the street is. And I don't know that the survey that I believe I gave you a copy of, I don't think it had that information on there.
It shows like thirty-seven and a half feet?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
From the edge of the street.
Yeah.
Anybody have any other questions? Any comments at all?
Well, just that I don't think it's making the street look irregular or anything. You actually have four corner lots on Dorsey. Every house is on Dorsey between column lane and what's the street to the south?
Harrell.
Harrell, yes. Those are all four corner lots. And the house to the south of me, which is directly with my lot, his structure is right on the property line. The two houses across the street, they have, I don't believe, a thirty-foot setback on that side either, so it's- Mine being farther in is not causing any real change that I can see. That is, you know, it's not like it's sticking way out there or anything. I'm the one farthest back from the street if you look at the other lots.
Thank you, Mayor, then. Let's move out of the public hearing and we'll call the February meeting to order. We've got everybody here today. We can all call up into the Baker- Here. Times. Here. Valentine. Here. He. Here. Backer. Here. And Rutgers here. Next thing would be approval of the minutes for the December meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
I'll second. Baker?
Good job on the minutes, bud.
All in favor? Of the vote.
Aye.
Old business, we've got the subdivision regulation changes. There's a lot going on with that. We've got the land restart permit, which is kind of included but kind of separate on its own. That was sent to you guys, I believe, yesterday. So I know it's probably something we could absorb discussed today if you guys want to and then move to further on it in March. Kind of whatever y'all want to do, but we're all here today, which is a good thing.
I've got a question about this I want to ask. So for standard practice, if any citizen, anybody comes in, contractor, who wants to do, who wants a permit for a construction project, is this going to be included as part of what they have to get? Or is this something separate they'll have to come back and get at a later date?
I'm not very familiar with it. I just saw it Friday, so-
What's the intent? I think I knew what's the intent for this. They just want us- I want to know what our standard practice is going to keep going forward.
So, I mean, the whole point is just to try to hold the contractors more accountable for for development that's less than an acre, because they don't have to have an NPD as per. And so when you have issues, well, Country Meadow is of course a special issue with when you have so much instruction already going in there with, you know, commercial property and then of course residential. And nobody knows where, what mud is whose and everything else, so kind of hard to tie that to exactly one property or not. So I mean, it's just trying to hold- I feel like that's most of the issue besides some of the access and stuff that we can't really deal with because can't really block out a public road, so... Most of the issue is just gravel and mud being on the road. Besides also noise, but that's not really within our realm. Besides police being able to actually do something about that.
Do other cities have this as a separate permit? As a standard practice, or is it or is it included in the cost of a permit that's being applied for?
That's a good question. I know Fayetteville has one, Hot Springs has one, Washington County. Yeah, I can do some more research. But my idea wasn't trying to make a, you know, a permit they have to pay for. You know, mostly just attach it to the building permit.
To the building permit?
Right.
Okay, I didn't understand that, okay.
No, that's my fault.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to do a hardship on a builder-
Right.
Or a property owner. All of a sudden you're buying two permits.
Right.
I think what you explained to me over the phone Friday was the the intent, so if you buy a building permit, this is something else signed off on and included-
Correct.
At no cost, but and correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're looking for is a way to- if you've got a developer or builder that's making a mess, so to speak-
Correct.
You've got some- You can pull a permit or stop work or whatever until the street's cleaned up. Is that kind of where-
Kind of, yeah. Something that would be more direct action rather than trying to go through a court process of- Because what currently has with the stormwater ordinance, you have to wait seven days or you have seven days to appeal the violation and fifteen days after to hear the appeal. And, you know, I mean, that's also a month just for an hour's worth of cleanup. So I don't feel like that's really, you know, pertaining to what that ordinance is supposed to be when Chris brought up a good point about, you know, having a much larger issue of, you know, flooding on something else or what, some actual court issue.
I think it's something we could definitely talk about further. I don't know. I'm in the business of this directly, but just in my experience, it's it's not so much what's being done, it's who's doing it and some of them are conscious of those. Sometimes you get a two-inch rain in July out of nowhere, dust turns to mud and gets in the street and it's not able to be cleaned up till equipment's there the next day, so-
Right. That's a Peewee, you know, I had him, you know, go out like looking at like, hey, just you know, try to make sure you're doing your best or, you know, doing something. We have to keep coming back out here, that is a problem if you're not fixing this issue.
Oh, there's definitely times where so people, anybody's told clean up, clean up, clean up, and it never, never gets out.
Exactly.
So... I don't know. Does anybody have any other thoughts or questions?
We're a community that, I think for the most part, everybody assumes good intentions. And so this is a great addendum to have to say this is something you just need to be mindful of to do. We're assuming you're going to do the right thing. But I think it's a good safety catch for us as a community to add. And I like the fact it's a no-cost ordinance. It just, it carries into one pull, one permit pull or request. I think it's a great idea and ready to move on it personally.
Okay.
Sets the expectation.
I'm thinking it'll be with any permit pull because your H-bag, your plumbing and all that, they could- Like, an H-bag person does geothermal, they're going to disturb the soil, so it could have some erosion or something like that. And that would keep them kind of, I mean, and attach it to every permit. For, I mean, well, I mean, electrical and all. Then we dig and electrical digs, plumbing digs, everybody digs. So I think that would work, I mean, doing it all permits. Just make it a standard on the list of it.
What is this like? For instance, we're talking permits for residential or any of the individual stuff like Peewee was talking about? For the big-time utilities, the franchise stuff or city stuff? If, obviously if a water main breaks, you fix the water main and you don't put a silt fence up first to get it fixed, but O.G.N.E.'s changing up holes or Arkansas Valley running away even having to get off into fields or whatever.
Right.
Where they don't pull permits to do that kind of stuff, is there a better way we should be looking at?
I've researched that.
That's a good question, though.
Yeah. And I don't know if you- Has Sean, the city attorney, looked at this? Is he-
He's just glanced at it really, but I think he was just mostly waiting on, you know, planning commissioner, city council to take more action and to get, you know, more groundwork. This is just an idea that was tossed out to help with the issue. So of course, you know, I didn't want anything, make anything permanent right now, but, you know, at least get this issue out. Let's us all talk about it, see what we can do to fix other potential issues.
True.
True. I know the city attorney did propose a couple of rough drafts to the city council of potential ordinances that may help with some of the stuff going on, but I think my understanding from discussion with him was that he wanted to let us take a whack at this first. And if we think that this will help solve some of these issues like we've seen recently, then, you know, maybe we pump the brakes on those. If not, then, you know, we move forward and give something a little bit more strict in that too.
Sure. And this, obviously with anything that's already permitted now-
Right.
To be anything permitted from once the council has it, so it wouldn't- If we've got a developer or builder with probably problems now, just wouldn't address that-
Right.
Put it out in there, so-
I think one thing and it's kind of in here, but maybe we could say it a little bit differently. The last piece of this first page notes the planning director and building inspector agree that the concerns have been corrected. Allowing them to have a little bit of discretion in this also gives us some leeway there. I mean, it's pretty clear what we want done, but if we have a circumstance where they can't, like you said, take care of it right away, then you guys, in your positions, would have kind of a really- We try to be understanding, it's like, you know, because I'd be sending them out there and hey, like, oh, you know, we can't get it because like the rain's about to happen or some issue. I'm like, okay, well, give you just an extra today, you know, after the rain, like, if it's still not addressed, then, you know, we need to do something. The expectation's set. We can't be like, oh, they'll never get us, you know. So it's something to help with that, like, no, we'll pull your permit. We already told you once or twice, you're still not fixing the issue.
That would be something, I don't know if Sean would be able to further detail that.
Yeah.
That's some of the stuff I've seen personally is, is you do a yard in July and you get a heat shower or two that dumps two inches in this one
Well, yeah.
Quarter mile you're at and it washes it all out, well, it's, you can't get equipment back till the next day. Sometimes you get it cleaned up out of the street-
Right.
You almost know we'll pull the permit and then they can't.
Yes.
Get their equipment there to work on it, so that I think is understood.
That would be the piece I'd like to see maybe a little bit of work on, but the city attorney making sure that we can allow for some discretion there, but but also make sure since the expectation's clear, we can enforce it.
So at this particular time, there is no expectation?
I mean, I just told Peewee to actually go see if they had a stormwater prevention plan for the proper county storage, because with that, you don't have to submit it to us, you send it to ABQ. And so, but we can go check to see what their plan is and how they're supposed to be doing anything, but it doesn't come to us unless we ask for it.
Same thing if they, if you're going to build a subdivision, you wouldn't know what their stormwater plan is without this?
I believe so. But I also haven't been planning director for a subdivision being built, so I don't know.
I think the engineering on that would be included in the documents by the developer. Maybe not have to be, but typically would be included. Here's the plan of what the, you know, for the drainage and all that and for the construction drop and stuff. We're talking though, this is more of just-
This is more construction.
Somebody's getting a geothermal, we'll build on the retaining wall, the swimming pool, stuff like that.
Right.
Where-
Like with Cheryl.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes the pool builders or whatever can make a bigger mess than somebody building out our house, just coming and going for a backyard or whatever. So this is where we're looking at addressing that, I think, not so much as a big project, somebody building a Walmart or a subdivision.
Yeah, because something like that, they already do have to have that stormwater prevention plan. I also just found that out, you know, the other day.
Well, my point was if we don't have anything for the stormwater, which is the bigger thing, then we definitely have anything in place for the smaller stuff.
We do have the stuff at stormwater, but that's, you have to, it's over a threshold of acreage of how much you're building. And so, but of course, that doesn't come to us, it goes to ABQ. And then we have to request that information and then if we find out that they're violating that pollution, that stormwater prevention plan, then now we take the long process of seven days of, hey, you violated this. Yeah, so-
And most of that, I believe, is for stormwater, is silt fencing, temporary stuff, maybe entrance, I think. The big concern with this from what I understand from just what I've seen go on in our December meeting and all that is people backing up their house, working the day they leave, they track mud on the street. When you get twenty people through that over a week's time and all of a sudden there's a trail out after it raining, trying to address that, is that-
Right.
Correct, so... Or like the example I gave where you do a yard before it's sowed down, heat shower washes it out-
Yeah.
And that stuff happens. And obviously getting it cleaned up. So-
Yeah, minimum of another idea is that's just what I found doing some research, so... It's just something to help with the issue currently, so- I think it's a great start. I think there's definitely some room for us to tailor it a little bit more- Right. For what we need. I still think Arlington and Virginia, but there's of course, you know, Fayetteville, Hot Springs, and they have way more in-depth permits and it's like, to me, I don't feel like it should go that far for our issues, but, you know, it's- It may be a little overkill for a city our size to- Right. Just copy something like that. Yeah. And I don't, I mean, they may have endangered species and of course Hot Springs is in the national park too, so, you know, the different, different context.
I would agree with what Evan's saying, is make sure Sean's on board with with the language on that and the enforcement and definitely agree that it's not- You've got some discretion there. It happens at four o'clock on a Friday and there's no way to get somebody there.
Right.
That's different than ten o'clock on a Monday and it tore just and they're just refusing to do it.
Yeah. The Bob gets sitting there and they're refusing to clean something up. And so Peewee always takes pictures, so, yeah, that's always good documentation as well, so...
Anybody have any other comment?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So we just want to title this till-
Till March.
March. And we can all probably cut it.
Sean, Sean looks at it.
Yeah. Okay. I'd say let's do that. We need to move and complete football.
I'll move the table to March.
Okay. All in favor? Are you this curious? All right, we'll go on to the new business first up is the rezon request. I believe all of you have the documents and everything on it.
You said- It doesn't show any knowledge, you did say if- Let them know if they have any concerns or questions that need to be answered, disable the decision until next meeting date and I'll come and answer those, that's my ability.
Because only one lot being changed? Or both lots being changed, though? Because it says in the actual, the letters that he wrote, does it not say that C2 of lot one only to be changed to R2? I'll have a letter in front of me.
Yeah, that's what it says.
So just clarification, if he was, if maybe lot two was already, but my understanding was we were splitting the lot into lot one and lot two and then making lot two the residential. But I didn't understand people.
This is why I try to have people here so they can explain.
Yes, that's correct.
So lot one is the only one that's changing?
It's current, yeah, I looked it up in the records, currently it's one lot.
Right.
So he's wanting to divide it into two lots and then rezon lot two-
To R2.
Yes, sir.
Plus there's lot one to R2, but lot two would stay- Only to be changed to R2. If it's one lot and you're rezoning it's two lots, then he's only specifically asking for one to be changed to R2. Is he wanting the, which one to stay commercial and for what reason?
I guess lot two would be the one that would stay, but I don't know about the reason.
Right.
Because it's just a house that's there.
Right, so that's why I'm wondering, if we're going to change a house to, and we're going to leave it as commercial and leave the house commercial? It's just where I was on that, I'm just stopping it.
I'm just doing usual, honestly, now. With that, so we need to ask him next month. So I make sure we're clear on what we're doing. I don't have any hesitation with that at all.
I'll make a motion to table till March and get some more information from Mr. Candelary. I have got a motion.
Do you know there's specific questions to ask him, Cody?
For this right here? I mean, I can ask him, yeah. Man, I can see if I can place them, I don't know if that'll-
No, that'd be fine. I just want to make sure that he knew what the commission was needing, what kind of information concerning the request.
And it could be just a simple typo on his letter.
Right.
So just asking, do you know why you want to keep that one lot, C2?
Lot two?
Well, yes.
Correct.
Yeah. Which is the one that already has the house on it, which is-
I don't know the wording on that or, I don't know if they, if we can, because it's this- It was at one time, it was, had to be R1.
Right, to build a home.
I guess we did the quarter or we changed it to C.
This says in six approval to change the existing zoning of C2 of lot one only to be changed to R2.
Lot one only?
What is that here? I missed the word only. But yes, lot one only to be changed to R2.
I mean, not really, I mean, because I mean, it's clearly stated that lot two is a commercial zone at this particular point. He's not wanting to do anything to it. All he's wanting to do is break off lot one as an R2.
So that he can build-
Did it say where the building would actually be located that he's, I mean, he's, he stated that it's a two-bedroom, two-bath, but did he say which particular one that was going to be built on? Oh, he said lot one. Does that need to be R two in order to have that duplex, or can it be com-
Oh, are you talking about-
Lot one. Yeah. What he actually asked, is that okay? Lot one to R2 in order to build a duplex?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that would take care of-
So truthfully, what he's asking is correct. We're just trying to get clarification.
Well, that's what I was asking, like-
If he wants to do it. And I don't guess, is there any reason that we need the clarification? And would hold this up, or can we move forward?
Not at this point, we wouldn't have to have clarification.
Because he's not changing that corner lot and he's just asking for R2 on lot one, so, I mean, honestly, I guess we could make a motion to approve his request, still, we don't- And he would just have to come back and we'd have to do this all over if he wanted lot two to be rezoned, is my only point.
But he does have it stated in the letter, like you said.
It does say lot one.
You approved it how he has it worded, so-
So we can, we can move forward for that at the commission.
Well, we've got even a motion on the table.
Drop a motion.
Okay. So that's what's drawn.
Motion to approve.
Can we clarify just so I'm prepared? What we're approving exactly?
Just-
Motion to approve, not R2.
Than a lot one.
Lot one.
Yes. Basically just how he has it worded in the letter. And is this splitting this from one to two? Yes. Yes, well-
Yes.
Okay.
So we're approving two things.
Yes.
The splitting of a lot that is C one or C2 right now-
Right.
Into two lots. With the lot one, which is, you know, something he's adding on the west or the north side, it will be R2 in order to build a duplex on. So I'm okay with that as long as we're not going to be doing this next month and like, hey, can we go ahead and get lot two as a R2 as well?
Because I also don't know if we need another public hearing.
Sure. And that's he has to submit another hundred fifty dollars. Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, because we've got a lot split and zoning change and then notice the zoning changes from C2 to R2.
So this goes back to the city being the best that we can to help him due diligence with his money and hopefully he didn't have a type of law error there.
He doesn't, he doesn't take it back or anything, so-
I mean, if we're, if we're asking for two things, should it be two variances? Or a rezon- A lot split and a rezon? Should it be that, as two separate things? We split it first and then we rezon second?
I mean, that's what he's got. He's requesting a lot split and then splitting that lot and then goes on down and he wants it rezoned to R2, so it is-
So it'd be two separate things.
So at this point, we could make a motion to approve the lot split into two lots. And then at a second meeting or a second time when he has clarification-
James, James' clarification was we thought it'd be easier to just leave the zoning as the city assigned, no reason. So that lot two, just leaving it at C2, don't want to mess with it.[1778.14] Just wanna be able to build on that.
Okay.
And that saves him, he doesn't have to come back and, and we don't have to have another public meeting for him, so.
So we're, so Jerry has made a motion. I'm trying to help her. Jerry has made a motion to approve Mr. Candelaria's request as the.
So R two. As, as written.
A lot, a, a lot split and a rezoning to R two.
Should we handle that as two separate, should we split it and then rezon it?
Because we're.
As two separate votes?
Yes.
Yeah, the only reason that we would do that is if he, if he ever thinks about maller properties, goes back and says, you know what? I wish that was an R two on the front, we wouldn't have to go back and do the rezoning vote. Instead, we could, I'm sorry, we wouldn't have to do the lot split vote again. We could just readdress the vote of making it an R two instead of C one or C two.
Meaning, meaning keep two.
Man, that's a lot.
Lot two will go to R two instead of, it will go from C two to R two. Is that?
C, yes.
I mean, it would if he asked, but he didn't ask.
Right.
So at this point.
And with his clarification, he said he has no intent of doing that, right?
He said he has no reason.
So I, I think that it's clear.
I mean, to me, I think you do want to vote to do. Anyway, I guess I can clarify my motion to clarify to split the lot and lot one be changed to R two. I second that motion.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second to approve the request to split the lots and move lot one to R two.
Correct.
Lot two would, would continue to be C two.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions and any discussion?
I'd like an entry to the record that Mr. Candelaria clarified his question by text message with Cody.
Yes, I've got that written.
Okay.
He tested if he responded.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
It is approved. Okay, we will move on to the variance request with Mr. Meyer, who was present and was here for the public hearing as well. Uh, we kinda covered this, but does anybody have any additional questions or the discussion?
So, I do, I've got a question here, so, so this, so the drawings that we have provided here from the owner are, say, the, the, it's estimated that the edge of the, of the property is gonna be three feet from the property line to the dwelling. Have we, I mean, have we validated that or verified that? Is it five feet or is it two feet? We, we, okay. Do we, I'm trying to, I was looking through the, uh, the variances. I thought does our, is, is our standard regulation right now, is it six feet from the property edge? I'm sorry?
It's seven and a half, I think.
I believe zoning is seven and a half for side setbacks.
Okay. So side setbacks even from, whether it be from road or from another adjacent property or whatever.
Other property, yeah. But there is no magic number of, if you go to seven foot, five inches or zero inches.
And it's not gonna look at a place, what the construction is gonna be done.
With the, with the spaces between the, the road and the property line anyway, we've got, we've got thirty-seven and a half feet already.
And it's not within that side triangle either.
Not within what, I'm sorry?
The side triangle. Yeah, no, it doesn't look like anything with a property like this. That would be my opinion, with, with Dorsey being offset in the right ways it is, then it's, I would agree with what Jerry's saying. With it being off several feet from the center. Any other questions or discussions? Any motion on it?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Okay. All right, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion, here's. Variance approved.
Uh, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Our variance is recorded? It's recorded so that once the structure is built, the title company does a come along and form some sort of objection.
That will be registered.
So, and that was my reason for asking. The title companies like to see that things are in order, so. It would be in the minutes.
Okay, would also be. I mean, the minutes of the city, um, it's a good question, sir.
This will be filed, your request will be filed with the minutes and it will show approved in the minutes.
Okay.
So you can get a copy of that.
Okay.
With your records.
Well, I was, my concern is that when a title company does a search, that, and they look at it and they say, okay, this is outside the variance, that whenever they do that search, they can then go into the county records, which is what they have access to. And they can say, okay, the variance was issued here. So that's why my question, whether the variance gets reported.
Not particularly with the county, but they have access to city records as well.
I, I do have a question, so just to make sure we're all clear. Entrance into the new, you're, you're, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be interest, uh, trying to enter from the west side off of Dorsey. You're gonna be entering off of column line.
I'm entering off of column line, yes.
There's no, there's no access.
Both of the, both of the, the carport and the garage face towards Dorsey. There's no entrance to that direction, to the.
Face Dorsey or face?
I, I'm sorry.
Face column.
Yeah, column. My, the, the new garage faces north, so that you come in the drive, the existing driveway and you enter that garage.
Do you have this sheet, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Okay, did you, for what I can tell, it's utilizing the existing driveway?
I did, I just wanted to, I just wanted to ask the question to make sure.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, sir, for being here, it's very helpful.
Okay.
Very well put together as well, so. Um, anybody have anything to add or add for March? Take a motion this turn? Make a motion. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor? Thank you.
Congrats.